The regular meeting of the Garden City Council will now go back to water. I'll ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Anderson.
Present.
Counselor Aries.
Present.
Counselor Boudreaux.
Counselor J. Cormier.
Present.
Counselor R. Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Gitter.
Present.
Counselor Gravel.
Present.
Counselor Gray.
Present.
Counselor Minz.
Present.
First item on the agenda, item 8632, the election of the Ward Five Consular for a term expiring 1/1/2012.
Mr. President.
In our packets, we have letters received from Mr. Brian LaRoche, 52 Prospect Street, Mr. James D. Robinson, 6 Vet Calf Street, and a Ms. Luanne Tibido, 29 West Broadway. We'll now open the nominations for the Consular.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Brian LaRoche.
Motion made by Consular Gravel, seconded by Consular Cormier. Counselor Aries?
I would like to place the name of James D. Johnson as candidate for Ward Five Consular.
Motion made by Counselor Aries, seconded by Counselor Graves. Are there any other nominations?
I will nominate Luanne Tibido. The individual has submitted their application. I feel they have right to be nominated.
Nomination made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Gravel. Are there any other nominations? Here are none, I will ask that the nominations be closed. Motion made by Counselor Gary, seconded by Consular Minz. Start the process. Yeah, yeah, motion was made by Counselor Gary. All in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The nominations are closed.
I vote for Brian LaRoche.
Counselor Aries?
James D. Johnson.
Counselor Joshua Cormier?
James Johnson.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Brian LaRoche.
Counselor Gary? Brian LaRoche. Counselor Gravel?
Brian LaRoche.
Counselor Graves?
James D. Johnson.
Counselor Minz?
James Johnson.
President Jansen?
Brian LaRoche.
Five to four, six votes is required. Majority of the Consular need a second ballot.
Majority of the Consular membership.
Right. I... We'll call a brief recess. Call the meeting back to water and we'll try it again.
Counselor Anderson?
Brian LaRoche.
Counselor Aries?
James Johnson.
Counselor Joshua Cormier?
James Johnson.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Brian LaRoche.
Counselor Gary? Brian LaRoche. Counselor Gravel?
Brian LaRoche.
Counselor Graves?
James Johnson.
Counselor Minz?
James Johnson.
President Jansen?
Brian LaRoche.
All right, Mr. LaRoche, four for Mr. Johnson.
May I just wait to call it?
Five, five for Mr. LaRoche, four for Mr. Johnson. Those did not change.
Can you do another recess and we can ask some questions of the candidates?
Yep, most certainly can. We'll recess again. Call the meeting back to water. And I'll ask the clerk to please try again.
Counselor Anderson?
James Johnson.
Counselor Aries?
James Johnson.
Counselor Joshua Cormier?
James Johnson.
Counselor Ronald Cormier?
Brian LaRoche.
Counselor Gary? Brian LaRoche. Counselor Gravel?
Brian LaRoche.
Counselor Graves?
James Johnson.
Counselor Minz?
James Johnson.
President Jansen?
James Johnson.
Six votes for Mr. Johnson, three votes for Mr. LaRoche. Mr. Johnson has a requisite number.
Mr. Johnson, if you can be, come on up.
I thought the second grade. I hated it a few years ago.
Oh, yeah.
It's just a temporary.
Will you all please rise while we recite the oath of prayer in the Pledge of Allegiance. Almighty God, we thank you for your wisdom this evening, inspire us to make good decisions, and encourage us toward the attainment of good city government. We pray that you bless us with the help of all the people of our city, to ensure that we are inspired and that we may be united in harmony and amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any person may make a video or audio recording of the open session of this meeting so long as it does not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at this meeting shall be submitted in duplicate to the city clerk as they become part of the minutes of the meeting. Is there anyone present who will be recording this meeting?
Sam Bonacci, Governor of New York.
If there's no opposition, Sam Bonacci will be recording this meeting. Here are none, you're all set. Counselor Cormier?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting of June 20, 2011, and the special meeting of June 15, 2011, Mr. President.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Anderson. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item on the agenda, appointments, item 8633, the appointment of the city auditor for the term expiring 7/7/2014. Motion made by Counselor Cormier?
I think it's a nomination, isn't it?
Oh, it's a nomination, that's right, it is.
I nominate Calvin Brooks for the position of city auditor.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Rob- Robinson, I was going to say Robinson Johnson. You know, it's the head, that's what it is. Seconded by Counselor Johnson.
Move that the nominations be closed?
Motion to move the nominations to be closed, seconded by Counselor Minz. Any discussion on closing the motion? Here are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we unanimously elect Mr. Brooks as city auditor.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Graves. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll take a brief recess while Mr. Brooks comes up and gets sworn in. Call the meeting back to order. Audit is before the city council. Item 8634, an audit transferring $123,993 from the mayor's unclassified termination leave reserved to various salary accounts for fiscal 2011. Report from the Finance Committee, Counselor Cormier.
Leading up to a motion, the mayor has negotiated all of the contracts with various departments, and in lieu of a salary increase, he negotiated in lump sum increases, if you will, for each of these departments. They're all just stipends, they do not count on the salary scale. If in the future, there is a raise given, again, this would not be, the raise would not be on top of this. Most of these people have not had a raise of any sort for the last four years. Concessions have been made. The personnel director is here to answer any questions that we might have. He also included in this, all of the department heads with the same average 2 percent stipend. They also had been frozen for the last four years. Finance committee discussed this, we are in favor of it, and I move this money order.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Anderson. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Gravel?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I would also like to echo the same sentiment as Counselor Ron Cormier. The workers of City Hall and various departments within the city have not taken raises for the last three years, which I commend them for doing. Not that they don't deserve it, they do work hard for their money. That's all I am, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other, Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick note, these stipends, just so everybody knows, will not be paid to the mayor or the city council. I just want to make sure that's known, there won't be any additional money given to the elected officials. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by, oh, sorry, roll call vote.
Counselor Aries?
Yes.
Counselor Aries?
Yes.
Counselor J. Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor R. Cormier?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Gravel?
Yes.
Counselor Graves?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Minz?
Yes.
President Jansen?
Yes, motion carries. Ordinance is before the city council, item 8635, amending ordinance number 94, adding certified abuddahs fees. Counselor Cormier?
Since supportive assessors may establish its own fees and charges pursuant to the provisions of Section 22F of Chapter 40 of the general laws as accepted by this city council on February 2, 2009, I move to grant the city assessor leave to withdraw the proposed ordinance establishing abuddahs list fees and to remove the matter from further consideration.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Anderson. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions, applications, et cetera, item 8636, authorizing a stop sign at Chestnut Street, at Main Street, in Union Square for a 60-day trial. Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. President, leading to a motion. I spoke about this two meetings ago, Public Safety had met on the issue of this intersection, and we sat out there with members of the police department and watched vehicles travel down. Part of the problems we have is the building on the corner, the business is too far out, so you can't see, so people are coming into oncoming traffic. The second problem is the oncoming traffic coming down Chestnut towards that intersection is doing upwards of 50 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone. So, the idea is to put this stop there, to allow that traffic to have to slow down and stop for safety reasons, especially now that we have three or four businesses that are really thriving down there. So, I will make a motion to authorize the stop sign on Chestnut at Main and Union Square for a 60-day trial as listed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Graves. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8637, petition of National Grid in Verizon, New England for joint poll locations on West Street. Seven polls and a public hearing is required. Counselor Cormier?
Make a motion that the city council president set up a public hearing.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Aries. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8638, adopting city of Gardner, Von Fred, Von Fred, Haiti, Sister City Relations Resolution. Counselor Cormier?
Make a motion to adopt the Sister City Resolution?
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Aries. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8639, notice of collective bargaining agreement between the city of Gardner and local 888 SEIU, Gardner DPW, July 1, 2011, June 30, 2014. Motion made by Counselor Anderson?
Move to put the agreement on file?
To be placed on file, seconded by Counselor Gravel. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8640, notice of the Gardner Police Department Justice Assistant Grant Application.
Motion placed on file, Mr. President.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Gary. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8641, executive order implementing department head and non-union stipends. Counselor Cormier?
Make a motion that this executive order be placed on file.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Graves. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, Public Safety Committee, item 8628, application of William F. Jones for a secondhand article junk dealer's license for Gold Rush at 310 Central Street. Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. President, just leading to a motion, based on the recommendation of the police chief, we are gonna, well, I'm gonna make a motion that we deny the application.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Graves. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Announcements and recognitions. Counselor Gravel?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Couple of quick announcements, the movies in the parks will be starting up on July 8, which is this Friday. I invite everybody out to the Monument Park. The theme is gonna be Keeping It Cool, so the youth commission will be handing out free frozen pops while they last. The movie will be Happy Feet, which is above King Penguins down in the Antarctic. And the second announcement I have is concerts in the parks will be starting up July 9, which is a great time. I invite everybody else to come and see that also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other recognitions or announcements? Unfinished business and matters for reconsideration. Item 8600, amending ordinance number 111, fees for wiring permit. Counselor Cormier?
Make a motion to go to second printing, Mr. President.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8602, amending zoning ordinance number 62, adding Section 1070, location of abortion providers. We have a joint hearing scheduled for the August 1st meeting.
Respectfully, we respectfully request more time for that.
Motion made by Counselor, oh, you don't have to motion. If there's no opposition, it's more time on that one. Business, Counselor Cormier?
Make a motion to go into new business, Mr. President.
Motion made by Counselor Cormier, seconded by Counselor Anderson. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Gary?
Welcome to our new Ward Five Consular, my Ward Consular. And thanks to everybody who put their name out there. I think we had three great candidates, all with unique things to bring to the table, and it means a lot stepping up. So, thank you to all, and welcome to June.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gravel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't want to take up too much time under the recognition. I also wanted to mention that the emergency management for the city of Gardner just received a $10,500 grant from the federal government to buy new radios, equipment, computers, et cetera, to do their job down in the south, at the South Gardner Firehouse. I also wanted to mention that there's been a lot of talk about a recent bill that's coming up on the floor on Beacon Hill about legalizing fireworks. I definitely am not in favor of this, only due to a public safety issue, and that's about all I'm gonna say on that at this point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor.
We're just supposed to congratulate both candidates for the position of very good above both. One more, longer than that. But welcome, your counsel, welcome to town. This should go up and down. You can go up and down. Nobody goes down to the village, so you know, that's the way it is. And just want to congratulate both of you.
Thank you, Counselor.
I just want to thank all the candidates who appeared, and we had a list of three solid, good individuals, and I want to congratulate the winner and wish him good, best of luck for the rest of the term. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Johnson?
Well, I guess it's my first opportunity, but I want to thank everybody, those that voted for me and also those that voted against me, and I hope I get your support in helping me keep me in line and teach me the ropes. And I also want to thank Brian, he was very spirited, I hope I get his support in the future in South Gardner and getting things going there.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Graves?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to welcome Counselor Johnson, and say that he's making me feel a little old. I used to feel young up here, I don't know, now I'm feeling a little old being sandwiched between these two guys. When I was going to Prospect Street School back in the early '70s, giving my age away, I went to school with his brothers, and he's just a little guy, but not so little anymore. So, anyway, welcome, welcome to the council, we're glad to have you, and also thank you, Brian, for putting your name in. We know how courageous that is to put your name out there, and we all do that, and it's coming up for each and every one of us pretty soon, but anybody who has the courage and the wherewithal to do that is a true citizen, and we really appreciate it, and they're doing a great service, win or lose, to everybody that lives in the city of Gardner. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to congratulate the candidates and welcome Counselor Johnson. What was great is after the first vote, I realized that the next person coming in was gonna have less hair than me, so I was, I was excited. I just want to go back one second to number 8634. What I mentioned, just before anybody blitzes me, when I mentioned the fact that the mayor and the council weren't receiving a stipend increase, it wasn't because I was encouraging it, it was just because I wanted to point it out so nobody thought we were voting on the increase for ourselves. I don't think we need one, so just want to put it out there. Next, I just want to congratulate Greg LaScotty and the development team for the building done by Hannah Friths. We had a ribbon cutting last Thursday for that building, and it's great to see the economic impact of grant money coming to the city of Gardner. It's great to see the lieutenant governor show up here, which he's done a number of times. It's a building that really focuses on economic growth, not only as it is now, but as a dynamic piece that'll include the whole downtown as we progress in. With that said, and kind of piggyback on what Counselor Gravel said, there's been a ton of discussion about the fireworks bill now, and I just want to put out there, you know, public safety has never met on this, though I have talked to some of the public safety members in our departments, and let's face it, they're already overworked and understaffed, and you know, I don't know what kind of an impact this would have on them. Economically, I would just say, you know, I keep hearing 400 jobs, there's hundreds of thousands of people unemployed in the Commonwealth, for me, that's not even a small drop in the bucket. So, I don't know why the discussion is out there, other than that it's a bill on the floor, you know. I remember when we discussed casinos a couple of years ago, and that seems to have died. I mean, you're talking 20,000 to 40,000 jobs, but here we are, we're debating a 400 job increase for the Commonwealth. We have no proof of an economic impact, and you know, I agree with Counselor Gravel, I wouldn't be in favor of it either. So, anyway, once again, just congratulations to the candidates, welcome to Counselor Johnson, and that's my piece. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Anderson?
Welcome, Counselor Johnson. I also want to... I also wanted to thank Calvin Brooks for the good job he's been doing on our behalf for his patients, his willingness to answer any and all questions, no matter how minute, no matter how old the information is that we're requesting, and he's been doing a good job for us, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure the other counselors do as well. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Cormier.
I do want to welcome Counsel Johnson. It's great to have him on board, I want to thank Mr. LaRoche and Ms. Tibido for also submitting their names, and as Counselor Graves so well put, exhibiting the courage that it takes to put your name out there. I want to compliment the mayor, and I don't do that often, but on resolving a number of our labor issues, if you will. We filed one of the contracts tonight with Ms. Bond that's here tonight, our very able personnel director. Most of these contracts have been resolved before they expired. We're not running backwards as so many towns and departments do. And I too want to thank Calvin Brooks for staying on board as our city auditor. He typifies what this city is so fortunate in having, excellent department heads. Calvin is a fine example of that with his own department, but he is just one of many, and during these tough economic times, people like Calvin, Deb Pond, and all of our other department heads, they've made the pieces work, and we're very, very fortunate on that score. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. I too would like to welcome you, Jim, welcome the board, and I want to thank Calvin also, because any time I got a problem, I'd go in that corner office and we talked, it does well. And I want to thank Brian and Luann both for putting their names in nomination. Very, very good, very nice, we appreciate that. Getting back to the fireworks, if they were legalized in Massachusetts, I'd be awake until probably 4:00 this morning because I heard nothing but boom, 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 boom all night last night, up until midnight, I heard it. So, can you imagine if it's legalized, what it's gonna be? With that, Counsel Cormier.
Make a motion to adjourn after the closing prayer, Mr. President.
Motion made by Counsel Cormier, seconded by Counselor Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Almighty Father, who sees us overall, and as we adjourn, we thank you for our continued deliberations and action witnessed during the course of this meeting, for us, the Lord, all who are gathered here, and the people who represent us as we are, to do thou attend to our common welfare, until our next meeting. Amen.
Mr. Grau.
Yes, sir.